Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to have a motion from the council to come out of the executive session. And do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then if I could have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session, please. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This time then, Mrs. George, if you could do a roll call, the council, please.
Okay, Greg Blosson here.
Here.
Glenn Chibley.
Here.
Karen McGee.
Here.
Karen Carlson here. Everybody can.
Here.
Glen Waters.
Present.
With the score.
Here.
And Mr. Spearman, who are present, if you could be so kind to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Congratulations.
I congratulate you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And if we could just remain standing for a minute and bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask for your wisdom tonight at the council meeting. We realize how fortunate life is, and we appreciate all of our public servants and hospital workers and emergency workers that help preserve life. On that note, amen. And evacuation plan, Mr. Spearman, please.
Yes, take one of the emergency two actors in the rear and just go to the right a little left to protect the outside. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Comments? I just have a few tonight. Number one, I would like to remind everyone, Coventry, that our dog licenses, those that have dogs, are due by May 30th, the end of this week. So please, April 30th is the day, but that's Sunday. So try to register your dog and get a new license and the rabies validation papers. And I know I have a couple of weeks ago and it's still $8. So please do that. Secondly, very important is the announcement that the raid on Spell Hall, the General Nathaniel Green Homestead location, is going to celebrate their fifth annual reenactment and encampment, scheduled for Saturday, May 6th, from 10:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m., and Sunday from May 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It is on 50 Taff Street in Coventry. As we all know, Nathaniel Green was George Washington's most trusted general. The admission for adults is $6. Admission for children are $4, and it's a $20 maximum per family if they have more than two children. And as you may know, Nathaniel Green would be 275 years old this year. He was born in 1742 in July, and that's special by itself. So that is this coming weekend. Also, or I should say, two weeks, my mistake, May 6th, May 7th. And then a special thanks to the approximately 40 volunteers that worked with DPW. On Earth Day cleanup this past Saturday, April 22nd, and as we all probably remember, it was a very rainy and cold day, but I understand that the 40 volunteers worked for those hours and approximately 10 tons of debris along the riverbank was collected. So again, the council and the town thanks those volunteers. And I know other cleanups were around Coventry, but this was the group that worked hand-in-hand with our DPW. I just, again, a general announcement is that I think every day should be Earth Day. I think we should make an effort to corral our litter, if we see litter, to pick it up. It only helps our town, our state, our society. I know along Route 3, I know along Pilgrim Avenue, there's so much debris, it's almost dangerous to get out and pick it up, but it is not benefiting Town of Coventry as we try to beautify our town and have pride in our town itself. That is the only comments I have tonight. And next, on the agenda, we have a proclamation to read, and I believe Officer Bruno is here, correct? And we have, Mrs. Bacon going to read the proclamation. Colonel, would you want to come up or just have Officer Bruno come up? Now, did I understand that Mr. Nicholas Morrow is also here?
I don't believe he is.
Okay. I thought, I heard he might be, but if any, I'll hope.
But I think he had.
I understand. I understand. Well, you want to just tell the audience that somewhat, those that don't know, I have the article here. The paper was a great, great article, a human interest story for sure. So go right, Colonel, it's yours.
So basically, our officer Nick here, back in October, he was coming back about 12:30 at night and witnessed an accident in front of him on the highway, Route 37, coming on 295. Stopped, the vehicle hit a guard rail, spun around, he stopped, looked in the car, couldn't find the occupant. So looked around, found a young male on the ground, assessed his injuries, really bad injuries from what you could see. Pulled out a tourniquet from his vehicle, he's on the SWAT team, so he's trained to how to use a tourniquet. Applied a tourniquet, rescue came, and quickly got him to the hospital. We later find out from the surgeons that if he hadn't put the tourniquet on, he definitely would not be alive today. So it was in the Projo. One thing I'd like to highlight is that he didn't tell us about this until probably five months after it happened. So it says a lot about him that he wasn't, you know, he really wanted no credit for it, wasn't seeking any accolades. So a really good story. We reunited him with the family, and they did a nice article in the Projo on it. So really unbelievable story. Kids alive today because of Nick.
And I know, I know we all read the article or heard about your heroic efforts, and I know Councilwoman Bacon had instantly contacted Glen Waters and asked for a proclamation to be drawn up, and she will be reading it. So just step a little bit forward. We didn't present.
Officer Nicholas Bruno, whereas congratulations and congratulations are in order for Officer Nicholas Bruno for saving the life of Nicholas Morrow on October 29th, 2016. And whereas a catastrophic, catastrophic was avoided because of Officer Bruno's skillful and quick response to a dangerous situation. Whereas this courageous action averting what could have been a tragic loss to family and friends and community was an action of heroism deserving special recognition by the governing body of this town. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Coventry expresses sincere appreciation and thanks to Officer Bruno for his heroic and humble actions. In testimony whereof, and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed on the 24th day of April 2017, signed by Glennford Chibley, Town Council President.
Okay, next, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Town Council minutes of April 3rd and April 10th. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments regarding either? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Council district updates. Why don't I start to my far right, Mr. McGee, please? District 3.
Nothing major in my district, this particular, I will repeat from last week, personally, we have a budget hearing meeting, I encourage all of us to just read them off. Give us your suggestions and your ideas, and listen to what we have talked about. It all has to do with the tax rate and so on. Also, a couple people have asked me, I see Heather McGee's out there, maybe you could let me know, is the sweeping schedule been put on the website at this time?
Yes, and we are in the re-aduary.
Okay, thank you. That's all that happened, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bacon.
I have nothing from District 5 tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman Carlson.
Well, I'd like to have good news for a change, but I don't, because I'm still getting emails from, the good thing is I'm meeting a lot of new people in District 1, Western Coventry, but again, still having issues with noise and flicker from the turbines. So I want the presidents to know, we're not ignoring it. We're working hard to try to come to a resolution. And I have good news, I'll let you all know, but right now, still the same issues.
Councilman LaBosse here, District 2.
Just want to mention, we had a, finally got a meeting with the J.R. Venegro Group on Collins Town Road, I met with the manager and Matt from planning, and we toured the site, well, the site that is operational up there, and it looks like, you know, everything is in compliance. The only thing I did ask for was that when blasting was going to occur, that we were going to get notifications prior to the, prior to the blasts. Other than that, it was a, it was an educational visit to the site.
District 4, actually, I just want to emphasize the celebration, the fifth annual raid on Spell Hall, which just happens to be in my district about three streets away. It's fifth annual, each year gets better, and you're encouraged to bring your family out there and see history being made in 2017. It's a, it's a great time. My grandchildren went the last couple of years, and they're definitely all excited about going again this year. So that's it basically for me, District 4. Next, we have a school department report. Mrs. Collien, or, okay, she's going to make the presentation. We're coming. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hang that down. You get it.
Good evening, everyone.
Go right into it.
How about now?
Thanks.
Yeah. Apparently. Okay, so.
We'll hear you.
For the month of April, we have first, Coventry Public School Strategy Planning Workshop on Tuesday, April 7th. Some of you are there. Over 40 stakeholders participated in the workshop, meeting was facilitated by the Center for Leadership and Education Quality League. There was representation from the school committee, the Town Council, police, fire, town, town manager, PTA, athletic boosters, CTA, SRP, teachers, parents, students, community organizations, community businesses, district and building administration. It was an extremely interactive session. We look forward to our next strategic planning workshop for Tuesday, May 2nd. I want to say congratulations to our Coventry Regional Technical, Regional Career and Technical Science students who participated in the Regional Skills USA competition. Three students received gold medals, five students received silver medals, and five students received bronze medals. Over 100 students received over $100,000 in scholarships at the Coventry Teachers Association Scholarship Center. We'd like to thank all of Coventry Public School Teachers, the Covent, I'm sorry, Public School employees, the CTA, community members and organizations who support this wonderful example of giving to students. Over 96% of our juniors took the SAT one day April 5th. The Coventry High School Administration faculty and staff did an amazing job coordinating and implementing this assessment. Donna Boden took the lead on this initiative. The Rhode Island Department of Education recently notified districts that beginning of 2017, 2018 academic year, Rhode Island Public Schools, Rhode Island Public School districts will no longer be using the PACT assessment. Surprise. Oh, surprise. Rhode Island will be adopting the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System, NCAS, for grades three through eight, and the PSAT SAT for high school assessments. This shift will assist us in helping, helping our students make those real-world connections and applications necessary to compete in post-secondary environments and the workplace. In Massachusetts, significance emphasis has been placed on developing partnerships with the business and higher education communities. These community partnerships have been driving forces in Massachusetts, overall achievement. While the standards are what we teach, the shift toward the NCAS and PSAT, NSAT, will assist us in ensuring how we teach is aligned with the outcomes necessary to succeed in today's global, global economy. This move will give much more local control in leveraging the systems that drive our educational process, the curriculum, the instruction, and the assessment. Teachers and students will also spend significantly less time administering and taking standardized assessments. So that's it for the monthly of what, as a bit one, huh?
Thank you for coming out tonight.
We appreciate it. Oh, yes, your pleasure.
I just want to say, and I'm directing Mr. Mr. Lewis and everybody, what a great job the VOTEC did by having a table and a display at the home show. Very professional. It looked great, and it was good to see our VOTEC program represented there. So it was a great idea to have them there. Very good, thank you.
Thanks again for coming out tonight. Okay, next, letter J licenses. Mrs. George, if you just want to read that.
This is an application for Pedler's license by OTLLC, PDA Gastro's, for May 6th and 7th.
Okay, we have that in front of us. They were the ones that came up last year and did real well, and Mr. Braga Cini has requested that they be allowed to again this year. So we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it, thank you. All right. Next. Okay, appointing members to the library board of trustees. We have resolution before us. We have three applicants have requested being reappointed, and the director of the library, Mrs. Blanchett, recommended a continued appointment service. So as far as the resolution goes, would you want to read it, Mrs. George? Or I know the names would be Glenn, Mr. Glenn Underwood, Mr. William Rogers, and Patricia Perry would be the three. Now, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to appoint Glenn Underwood, William Rogers, and Patricia Perry to the library board of trustees.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'm not sure any of the individuals still present here. Mr. Underwood, what did it go, of course, tonight, Mr. Rogers, I think, was here and left alone with his period. Okay, well, they will be sworn in later on this week by Mrs. George. Okay, next, Mrs. George, we have number two, appointing a member to the housing authority. We have the resolution in front of us, and the one candidate has reapplied for continued service, and we only had the one candidate. Her name is Rebecca Parento. Everybody appointed to fill the term expiring in May, May 1st, 2022. And I know that we've got, Mr. Waters had got an email sent that she could not be here tonight, but do I have a motion to pass the resolution with her appointment?
Motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys have it. All right, and next, in general, we have appointing members to the Coventry Planning Commission, reference four, and we had five outstanding candidates. It was basically a somewhat difficult decision, but as far as, we have two candidates that have been on, and we, the majority believe are in the favor of the chairman, so that would be Mr. Ron Flynn, and Mr. Carl Mattson would be the two who continue on service until May 1st, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Subway.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye, because I would like somebody from west of 102.
Okay, that's one.
And it's nothing against the two candidates that were reappointed, but I think we need representation for Green and Western Coventry.
All right. Mrs. Bacon, did you vote? Out there. Okay.
No, no, I'm not voting either.
So that's out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm voting no.
You're voting no? Okay, so that's three yeses and two no's. Okay, I got, I guess I got it. All right, next point, appointing one designated for the SRP Pension Board, reference five. Reference five, and we have that in front of us, and you want to read that, Mrs. George?
The title, appointing one designated to the SRP Pension Board, Bob Tivo.
Okay, M.D. Robert J. Tivo Jr.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Waters.
This resolution is to appoint our finance director, Mr. Tivo, to the School Related Personnel Pension Investment Advisory Board. As part of the board, the town gets a representative. Again, it's just an advisory board to advise on the investments. So this is the town's member, the school, and the SRP Union also.
Very good. Any, I think it's an excellent pick, personally, in my opinion, any of the comments regarding the resolution or? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, that's two. A second?
One second.
All right, have a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Next. Which is, adopting, Mrs. George, why don't you cover that one for me?
Okay, resolution. Resolution adopting amended Town Council meeting calendar, canceling the July 10, 2017 meeting due to summer scheduling.
Okay, so that would be removing July 10th, and the meeting, the one meeting for July would be on the July 24th, near the end of the month. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the amended calendar.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, number six, Mrs. George.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to sign the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling Services Agreement.
Okay, Mr. Waters, you want to just briefly give some explanation to this?
Sure, the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, we had an agreement that ended, ends, excuse me, ends June 30th, 2017. This resolution affirms my ability to sign on behalf of the town to renew the Resource Recovery Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling Service Agreement through 2019, June 30th, 2019. It's mandated by state law that we participate with the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, the Rhode Island landfill, to dispose of our waste, and the contract is going to be attached to the final resolution.
Okay. It's going to be attached and leave neighbors? It is attached.
Copy, well, yes, it is attached now.
Okay.
Upon final execution.
Right. Okay.
So once, once, if the council approves the resolution, I'll sign the agreement. Rhode Island Resource Recovery will sign the agreement, then the designed agreement will be attached to the final passed resolution and filed in the poll.
Okay. Motion to authorize the management to sign the agreement.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Can we have a?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Can we have a discussion regarding, regarding the prices that are going to be in this agreement?
Sure.
For the town. I have our headquarters director come up?
You mean? Hi, Mr. McGee.
We do see there was a 58 page.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. I guess the question is, what prices?
Currently, we're paying $32 a ton to dispose of the waste. After months of negotiations between Resource Recovery and the state and the different municipalities, they've had the cost, they're burning a deficit, they've raised the price to $39.50 for 2018 and $47 a ton for 2019. Commercial rate is $67. If we fail to sign, execute this agreement by August 1st, we will be charging $67 a ton disposal cost until we sign the agreement.
Terrific, thank you. And the reason why I asked is we didn't, we didn't have the agreement attached. We received the 58-page email this afternoon, and the folks sitting out here, I wanted them to know what the prices were. That's all I wanted you to explain. Thank you. No, no, I understand that, I just wanted everyone to know, that's all. Thank you.
Anything else?
No. Mrs. Carlson has a question, I guess?
Almost do.
Yeah, we knew that wasn't going to happen. Back in the old days, a few years ago, we used to get those rebate checks, you know, from Resource Recovery, they were the recycling incentive program checks.
Correct.
Those went away, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to double check that because I remember Tom having his picture taken with checks.
That's how we originally were funding the recycling coordinators to do that. But that's disappeared.
That was nice money coming in.
It was $20,000, $23,000.
Yeah. I did get this, and I read it kind of highlighted a little bit. But because this, I thought this was kind of confusing. But the, but there were a couple of questions. When we got credits from Exeter, that was just the leaf, the compost?
Yeah, actually, I obtained approximately from five different communities, the maximum that we can transfer. Exeter's one, Central's another one, Los Smithfield. So I take as much as we can legally get. Last year was 444 tons that we're allowed to transfer. We transferred 442 tons, so.
Okay.
To our town. It's still costing us approximately $55,000 a year, even with those transfers.
Okay, because I know we would get a $0 per ton up until our cap, right? Okay, and then?
Our cap's about 880 tons.
880?
This, it was this past year. I haven't got the information.
They may take it down. You never know, right? And the other thing was, oh, composting for contract. When they say they'll give us compost, is that municipal composting?
Yes. They compost their resource recovery, they take all that. They compost, they have some use for cover, and it also has some available for municipality use. They finish compost.
For the town use, not individuals?
Nope, and I grab it every time you get something.
Do you share it with the schools?
I share it with schools.
Like, if you get compost from the Resource Recovery, do they get some?
They do not at this point unless they request it. We'd be able to utilize, we'd be able to utilize everything that we've been able to request, the 100 tons maximum. We've been utilizing that ourselves.
Okay, because I know they have some programs they might want some for.
We're working with Jason White right now on some of those.
Good. Okay. So what's it, what we've received in this letter today, right? This is exactly what's going to go in that contract?
Yes.
The numbers won't change? Everything's set?
The numbers are laid out in the contract.
Okay, all right. That's, I just wanted to double check.
Thank you.
I have a quick question before you leave.
Yes.
Compost, composting, what do we charge a ton of yard waste?
Well, one way to see our cap is $25 a ton. And then it's the cost of transporting it to Johnston, the landfill, just bringing 40 yard dumps every time.
Can you give me a rough idea last year of what we spent on just yard waste in general?
$56,000.
$56,000. So we are working diligently to find a comparable site in town.
I am working with town.
Okay, great.
I'll try and look at that.
Thank you.
Oh, just one more question. How have, how many times have we had yard waste deliveries to Johnston turned back? Do they reject any of our trucks?
Not for yard waste.
But they have for what, recycling?
Recycling, yes. Five, four this year.
Do you have any plans to update residents on any new postcards for what can be recycled and all that stuff?
There is an ongoing process of education.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I think we're already, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Oh.
We had a motion.
That's right, I had a second, and there was discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Number seven, reference 7A. Mrs. George?
Resolution extending the current moratorium on solar-powered electrical generators.
Okay, Mr. Waters, you want to just?
Sure. After the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the town council, I had a quick side with our planning, acting planning director and our representative for the solar ordinance that looking at the dates for when the draft ordinance would come back before council for final review and then be sent to the Planning Commission for consideration and a comeback for a public carrying and second and final vote. That timeframe put us two days, I believe, after the end of the moratorium. So it was agreed to by the three of us that bringing four-day, 60-day extension would allow plenty of time for the legislative process to continue.
I had a quick question. If it's two days over limit, why do we need a 60-day moratorium? Could you give one week extension? I mean, that'll be more than adequate.
It was just, just to keep it consistent with the previous moratoriums. I mean, you could do the 30-day, but we felt it would be, it would give us plenty of time. It should also be noted that once the legislation takes effect, the moratorium ends. So if the council votes to adopt the new legislation two days after the old, the current moratorium ends, if there's an extension, then the extension ends as well when the vote takes place. And so the moratorium dies when the council takes it?
I just don't think it's a necessary thing. I mean, we're talking two days. Nothing's going to happen within them two days. There's no need. I didn't vote for the last extension. I think we have plenty of time to do this, and I don't think we need to extend it to 60 days.
Well, we, I think, Mr. President.
This will be a total of 180 days. That's six months. We originally were going to do this in a 60-day extension.
We had a six-month moratorium in the turbines. And, but also, we only have one meeting in June, one in July, and one in August. So that could impact discussions for the council on the changes to the solar ordinance.
I think this is just erring on the side of safety. In case there's any give and take or council playing, you know, board back and forth. And it's, it's just to be safe. If everybody comes to an agreement, the council agrees, it's over. The moratorium's over. So although I wonder sometimes if it's needed, but again, it's the air on the side of safety, I think. So, any other comments on that? If not, I'll have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 3-2. All right. I just want to go back with an oversight on my part in that we did not have any participants here from the library board to swear in. Likewise, we did not have any, the person to swear in for the Coventry Housing Authority, which all of them will be sworn in later. Our two individuals that reappointed are, are here. So at this time, if you cared to, you could come forward, and I will do the swearing in, save Mrs. George, and you coming back another, another week. All right, if you could raise your right hand, gentlemen. Do you solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful to the state, support the laws and constitution thereof, and that you will well and truly execute the duties and responsibilities as a member of the Coventry Planning Commission for the term for which you were appointed or until another be engaged in your place? So help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Best of luck. Thank you, Becky. All right, next on the agenda, letter L, reference eight. Mrs. George?
It's a hearing before the liquor control board regarding Gardens End.
Okay.
Mr. President, I need to recuse myself of this for purposes that I am, it's established and used twice once a week.
Okay, understandable, and thank you. So we will continue on. Mr. D'Agostino, if you want to sort of introduce the situation?
Open the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I also asked if the license holders.
Okay, well, all right. Thank you for your recommendation. First of all, we'll take a motion to open the meeting to the public, open meeting. Do I have a motion? Okay, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. And do we have the proprietor here tonight? The owner of Gardens End?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. They are present. All right? Okay, so we start with the police side first, correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. D'Agostino.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. I'd like to introduce to you Officer Wyatt Houston. And Officer Houston, can you just describe for the council what brought you to Gardens End on March 29?
On March 29, 2:00 in the morning. Sergeant Portia observed numerous vehicles parked on our garden.
Did he ask you to go to that premises to conduct the check?
He did.
And when you went there, were you able to observe the premises from outside of the premises?
Yes.
And approximately how long did you observe the premises from the outside?
For about two minutes.
And can you tell the council what you observed during that time?
I observed one cocktail glass in front of a female. And I observed a male drinking what appeared to be an alcoholic beverage.
And just to recap, approximately what time was this?
About 2:02 in the morning.
And did you subsequently make entrance into the premises?
Yes.
And can you describe to the council what occurred when you entered the premises?
As I entered the premises, employees and patrons proceeded to go upstairs. When I went upstairs, I approached six people upstairs.
And among the six people, did you, did you identify the person who you saw drinking from the glass of beer earlier?
Yes.
And you said that you observed a cocktail glass in front of a female patron?
Yes.
And that you observed that female at the time?
Yes.
And can you just describe to the council what occurred next after you made contact with the six people?
Just identified them. I advised them of the violations that they, they had. And we identified them all out instantly. And no one appeared to be overly intoxicated. They were without incident.
Okay. And do you recall what time you cleared the scene?
I cleared the scene about 2:00.
No further questions, if the council has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the council of the officers? Towns prosecutor, I guess we call it. Any questions at all? Yes, yes.
I couldn't hear. Why were you dispatched? Were you dispatched there? I couldn't hear what you had said. I'm sorry.
My sergeant at the time said he observed numerous vehicles in the parking lot after 2:00 in the morning.
Okay. On other occasions or that?
Just that.
Okay.
Mr. President, I don't have a question to discuss. Do I have a comment when it is appropriate?
Okay, without the officer, Rob, do you have anything there? Okay.
I ask one more.
Sure, sure. It's your time.
The, the person that you saw drink alcohol beverage, it was a beer, I believe it was in the.
Yes, she told me it was a whiskey.
And was that an employee or was that?
She told me you weren't there, yes.
Okay. So he was drinking, when did, because it says that he had been served the beer three hours prior?
He told me it was served in three hours prior, yes.
Oh, okay. So do you know who served him the beer?
No, no.
Okay. But he was drinking and working?
I just saw him drinking prior to when I entered.
Okay.
And then when I entered, I saw an old, not empty glass. I saw the beer and the cocktail glass on the bar. But they were downstairs. They had all gone upstairs.
And then the, the other two, the, the female, there was a female there?
Yes.
And she was accompanied by a male? And they were there because they were looking at the establishment or?
Yes, for a birthday party.
At 2:00 in the morning?
That's what they told me.
Okay, thank you.
May I just ask a follow-up question of the officer?
Please.
Officer Wyatt, Councilwoman Bacon asks you some questions. Did you have any reason to investigate further the information that was given to you by the patrons?
After what exactly?
After they, after they gave you an explanation of why they were there, did you have reason to question it further about that?
No, I did not.
Because the purpose of your visit was as a license check, correct?
Okay. Any other questions of the officer at this time? Okay, I guess we're set with.
Thanks very much.
Town side, thank you very much. And is it Mr. Yam, and is it Ms. Chang?
Yeah.
Okay. If you come forward then, if you care to make any comments regarding this violation?
You're welcome. I like happy people because of my impressions already.
I understand.
Good morning, Mr. Wong, I'm his wife.
Okay.
And usually close at 12 on Tuesday night by the owner.
Can you just pull the mic now?
I'm sorry, yes. Talk into the mic, please.
We close at 12, usually on Tuesday night. On that night, I was laboring, so you have to leave and send you to the hospital. So we spent the whole night at the hospital. And he is still worried about the employee. So he called one of our friends to come to the restaurant to keep an eye on them. But they still not close on that night.
Okay, that was according to what we've read, or I've read. Marcus Lee was helping out?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And yet, wasn't able to get people out by the 1:00 or 1:30. Okay. Have you had any other problems or, let's put it this way, violations since you've owned it, Gardens End? Is this, is this the first? Is what I'm asking, I guess? It is? Okay. Questions of the owners? Sure. Mr. McGee?
I mean, I, you in my district, and you've been, how many years have you been in business? Three years. And I have been on the council court a few years. I have not heard of a single complaint. I think you run a good business. I'm, you know, I, unfortunately, you know, your, your situation, you are ultimately responsible for what happens, you know, unfortunately. Well, I like to think it's an isolated incident because you do run a good business over there. So I just need to pay a little more attention to make sure your employees are here. But I, I think that you have run a good business. I have not heard of any complaints from this business at all. So I'd like us to take that into consideration.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions of the proprietors? Did you say that was the evening that you were taking to the hospital?
Yes.
Okay.
I followed it.
Uh-huh. Everything went okay?
Yeah.
You did? Well, that's good. Very good. And what, what was the date? Was it the same?
Yeah, the 49th.
It was?
Yeah. That was that night.
Okay, all right. So congratulations on that. Congratulations on that. I have likewise not heard of any past problems on this situation. And I understand, according to the officer's observation, it didn't seem like any one of the six was intoxicated. Just a violation of the hour, I guess. But I don't have any questions. More of you, I don't think. Just that, is this the same individual that, let's say you can't be there at closing time? Is this the person you depend on, this Mr. Lee, or is there someone else?
Usually, he's the one who gets care Tuesday night.
Okay. So how about other nights?
Other nights, you have another employee.
Most, most of nights are cold. There's some probably the five days.
But again, I think you've answered, we have, you haven't had any other problems, or at least it hasn't been observed. We have, you haven't had any other problems or at least it hasn't been observed and noticed of being there after, after hours. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, again, I think you can have a seat. And, and I just opened it up, it's a public comment. Is, is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment regarding this situation, this after-hours? Violation, okay. No. Okay, now I guess we can take a motion to close.
The public hearing.
Close the public hearing then, if someone wants to make the motion?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. Public comment. The hearing is closed. And basically, is the Colonel still here? Yes, he is. Would you mind coming forward on this one? Like all of them. Good evening again. I guess just wanted to confirm that as far as your knowledge goes, there's been no other problems. This, there weren't any fights, there didn't seem to be anybody intoxicated.
I did a check, the last six months, we've checked that bar about eighteen times.
Okay.
Like almost all the other things we bring before council, though, it's not the first time we've had an issue with the bar.
Right.
So, we'll do routine checks, we'll go in. There was issued a written warning on, I'd say, it was a couple of weeks before. On February fourth, there was a documented incident of you being there closer to a block. It's not something we brought as a violation.
Okay.
But like any of the other things, the first time at council, your summons, we've been into those places, still warned them verbally.
Okay.
So, I would say that they've had no issues.
No, okay, all right, so I'm glad you're making that comment, so they have been warned before then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that's new information then.
But overall.
Overall, I.
The councilman McGee, they have not had serious issues.
Okay, I guess, I guess, well, there's a few concerns. I don't know how many establishments are in Coventry. How many would there be, Mrs. George, of these? Those licenses, nineteen, eighteen, huh? Something, eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I mean, one recommendation, I think, and I don't mind signing the letters, if we get the letters out again, reminding them of closing time. Because it seems to be like somebody's just not, not getting the message, I guess. I understand this mitigating circumstances on this particular one and I certainly sympathize with the situation. And, and I just would like any other feedback or comments from the council regarding this individual or questions of the Colonel, if you wish. If not, Colonel, I think, I think you're all set, I guess.
Not just, so you have given verbal warnings in the past?
We did on the fourth, they went in their boat, I think the fire boat. And they didn't see, they saw patrons of the bar, they didn't see the victims, so they just gave them verbal, but they documented.
Okay.
Like Palm Pub and some of the other places, we always want to go in to community contacts and checks. And if they have an issue, they're usually always in verbal first.
I have a question, too, if you finish.
Yeah, no, so it's just a verbal and there has been a written?
There's a written one.
Okay, all right.
Now, that, was that a violation by being there by two? That's my question. I mean, I, I know it was courtesy, probably, you're pushing it close, pushing it a little.
It was documented, but again, it's one of those things, I think, we can bring a violation on it. It was supposed to, so we said, hey.
So, for real violations, this would be the only documented one, am I correct in saying that?
There was another incident where the bartender was found at three in the morning in the parking lot, just giving a ride home, intoxicated. I mean, things like that, I mean, you know, concerning. But again, I think on the whole, this is pretty good. You know, I just want to highlight the council that we don't always bring that first violation, or we give businesses great excuse.
Sure, if I could ask you, you did a verbal warning in the past and there was a written warning in addition to the verbal?
I would say there was a verbal on, on that particular incident.
Right. Okay. All righty, other questions of the Colonel?
No.
Or?
We had a, just to add, we had a very productive meeting with the solicitors this past week.
Okay.
The ordinance.
Good.
Getting scheduled.
Good.
Into the ordinance.
Actually, I think that would be a good idea, setting reminder letters out to all these establishments, just, because I want to know, because we don't like seeing anybody come in front of us anymore than they want to come in front of us. So, just, you know, a little reminder might be a good idea. And I, I think that, you know, this particular case, because they were all very cooperative, I mean, a written warning would definitely be good, but I would certainly like to cover the cost of our police officer that had to come in tonight to testify, you know. So, I think, you know, an easy fine, you know, because of, maybe a hundred dollar fine, could cover the cost, would that cover the cost of our officer?
Do you think it'd be fine?
Would that be acceptable?
If you want to commemorate the birth of a child with a heavy fine.
That's right, you know, I mean, we, I'd rather you by being the president, you know, than to be paying fines, correct? But, I mean, I'd like to suggest that.
I would like two fifty.
Two fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree because we do have Harris Bar here and that's what we gave them and I think you can't, you've got to be equitable to everybody. I appreciate.
And Palm Pub.
And Palm Pub and JW. Yeah. I think we have to have a standard here and, and I don't want, I'm not putting you on the spot currently, I don't mean to do that, but, you know, we seem to be experiencing this. And I appreciate the fact that our officers are watching what's going on out there. Because I think it's really important not to have anybody driving drunk. So, I think they're doing a great job, I really appreciate their job, but I think two fifty.
Our intent with the ordinance review and update will also be followed by verbal letters to the businesses that connect, you know, social media companies, to remind people that it's safe when they're inside an establishment and on the way home.
Well, I think that's what we had for Harris, right? Two fifty?
I don't recall.
Do you remember, Sean?
Harris, I think, was a donation to Matt for one hundred.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
It was one hundred.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah. I, I, again, I, I, you know, I kind of, I, I hesitated the thought of having to remind owners of the ordinance and the laws. It's like the night watchman. To be honest, I think every one of the eighteen, nineteen establishments, if they needed to, they could hire a clock watcher. And, you know, he doesn't drink, he doesn't, you know, socialize, he, he rings the bell, you know? And, you know, if that's what it takes to follow the ordinance, the one we got currently or the new one we're working on, that's what they should do. And I understand community service, I understand community policing, I understand police stopping in and say, hey, watch the clock, it's time to close. And, and again, I only trained policemen for twenty-nine plus years, I kind of resent using officers that way. Because I think there's other things to do on community service and community policing. But I'm not, you know, necessarily a hard law enforcement only person. There is a happy medium. And I, I definitely will sign the letter if we decide to draft one, reminding the owners that one o'clock is one o'clock. And to be out by one thirty is one thirty. Yours truly, Glenn Shipley, Town Council President. And if that leaves eighteen stamps, then we'll send that letter out. So, that, we'll maybe have some other situations this summer, but at least they will have received the letter, all right? And I, I'll write it in red, I'll sign it in red, as in in case there's people intoxicated, passed out in parking lots, whether it's they're bleeding from fights or they just can't follow the clock. I'd be happy to read, write that, uh, sign that letter, but that's down the line. As far as this particular situation, I, I personally, I think two fifty is a little heavy. I'd like to see a compromise. I know Harris Bar and Grill was a hundred, maybe, would, would we be able to get approval on one fifty for three or four of the council people that can vote? Is that doable? A hundred fifty? And this is a, a warning.